Good evening, with all nine board members here. We'll call the called meeting for June 13th to order. And the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Norman tonight.
Okay, all who are able, please stand, face the flag. I pledge allegiance...
...to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dufler, would you like to address the executive session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the public's information, tonight at 4:30, we had a executive session, which is simply the board's only outlet to be able to meet as a whole and discuss any pending litigation from our office, the law director's office. So that's what happened, and that is something that's provided for under Tennessee law. Thank you.
Okay, recognizing elected officials here tonight. Happy birthday and welcome to Chairman Randy Smith, who's in the audience. Happy birthday Chairman Smith, Commissioner David Wright, City Council Stephanie Welch, and Evelyn Gill. Is there anyone I have overlooked? I said Evelyn Gill. Okay. All right. So first, we're gonna take changes to the called meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the...
Still no.
...motion by Mr. Norman? Do I hear a second by Ms. Horn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next is public forum. Ms. Roundtree, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the called meeting?
Madam Chair, we don't have anyone signed up to speak at public forum for a special called meeting.
Okay, then we'll go to Ms. Copey.
Item six, approve superintendent's annual evaluation.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Open for discussion. Do we have any discussion on this? Ms. Dethridge?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess in looking over the annual evaluation, it is consistent with a lot of things that we as a board expected of our superintendent. But I guess the only thing that caused me pause in some of the statements of the narrative of the whole evaluation is the consistency in comparing what we're expecting him to what happened with past administration. I don't... Some of the way it was worded, I don't really care for the fact that we're continuing to compare his performance to the past. I mean, let's just deal with what he has done in the past year and how well he has done according to what we expect, our expectation. I do agree with a lot of things that Ms. Owen has said in her evaluation. The rubric did not fit a lot of things that we could evaluate him. It was hard for me to say how he related to his, in his staff meetings, executive meeting, what he did, his an agenda meeting, so... And a lot of things, as a superintendent, as our employer, I expected that to be a part of his job. I don't think setting agenda items and things... I'm just clarifying, I guess, what I did and why I said what I said. I think those are the things I expected of him as a superintendent. And the only thing I really... Because he was a part of the past administration. He was a part of the leadership team. He's been on here for about 40 years. So he was a part of a lot of things that was done at that time. And so, when you talk about the fear and all that culture and things, he was a part of that culture. And I was a board member, and I was a part of the board that evaluated that culture. So I don't think... I just take, I guess, heed to the fact that a lot of things that were said in here was negative. And then turn around and just slam the fact that we're exemplary status. I think that doesn't take into consideration all the hard work and dedication that was put into that for Knox County as a whole. And when you make the statement that exemplary is no longer mass poor ACT scores in high school level, maybe, but as a whole, we were still exemplary status. So even though I agree with the overall score, there were just things that were said in here that gave me pause. And that was the impact of former leadership and all that that was continually followed throughout the whole narrative. And so I think, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think we should leave Dr. McIntyre's administration and what happened in the past is not a part of what we're trying to discuss here today, as far as a part of the narrative. Let's just deal with what he as a superintendent did and how effective he was in his duties is charged.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fugit?
You will not be surprised that I agree with Ms. Dethridge on that point. At some point, what happened two years ago, happened two years ago. And we have got to quit using that kind of language all the time. I know it's in here, but I would agree, we have to evaluate on what is now. And I also agree with, there are a lot of things that were in the evaluation that were just part of the job. So I would, I don't know that we can respectfully request that some of the references to the previous administration be taken out and just evaluate Mr. Thomas based on the job that he's done. I don't know that we can do that today, but I do want to go on record that I hope that this will be the last year anybody talks about it because it's still in the paper, it's still being talked about. It's like, at some point, let it go.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other lights on, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So, yes, okay, so we've had...
I'm sorry.
Yes, Lynn Fugit made the motion and then persecuted it. Sorry. Okay, without any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. What?
I'm passing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pass on Ms. Fugit.
Okay. Item seven, discussion and possible action on two-year extension of superintendent's contract.
Motion to approve.
I second the motion. So motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Bounds. Discussion, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this item was just listed as discussion and impossible action, but there's no... I mean, do we have a draft?
Well, I can make it... Mr. Norman, would you like to revise that, or I can...
Do I need to...
Are you making, are you making a motion to...
I'm making a motion to...
For the two-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, clarify your motion. That's what I assumed you meant, but on record.
Okay, the motion is to approve a two-year extension of the superintendent's contract.
And I second that, okay? So I see...
Just for a clarifying question then, Mr. Norman. So, a two-year extension with the contract as it is currently written? Okay, that's what I want clarification on. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will oppose a two-year extension, but am in favor of a one-year extension, and here is why. I think that Mr. Thomas ought to keep his job and be our superintendent, but I think that meets expectations evaluation does not warrant the best possible extension of a contract that we could get if it had been and exceeds expectations, I could support two years, but as a meets expectation, I could support a one-year. And I just want everybody to know that's why.
Yeah. Ms. Dethridge?
Okay, oh, thank you. I just remember from previous conversation with the board, I think with the new board members coming onboard, and we have three new ones, that if we extended another year, that would give them two years to work under him and be able to do their own evaluation and their own extension. And if he does a lot of things that he says he's going to do in the strategic plan, I think that won't be a problem. But I'm gonna say I will agree to a one-year extension as well, but I will leave it up to the new board coming on as far as extending it beyond that.
Mr. McMillan?
I would like to, under the circumstances, I think that Mr. Thomas, as Ms. Fugit said, is very deserving of keeping his job. And the first year, it was very trying, I'm sure. And I'm sure that he will improve the second year. But we've had a history of having to buy out contracts in Knox County in the past, and I think, under the circumstances, it probably should be limited to a year. So therefore, I'd like to make a substitute motion to extend it one year as opposed to two, if I could get a second to that.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to extend that contract one year. Do we have discussion on the substitute motion? Ms. Hill?
Yes, question. Contract as is with the extension of time, then the salary and benefits all will remain the same. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? It is my opinion, and I will not be voting in favor of the substitute motion, because I think Ms. Fugit has a, has developed a wonderful three-year strategic plan that goes through, and I think that two years would allow us to implement that strategic plan, three-year strategic plan with the two-year extension. So I will not be supporting that, but we can take, I guess, a roll call vote if there's not any other discussion. So we'll start over, let's see, let's start in Ms. Dethridge's... We'll start with Ms. Dethridge. We're voting on the substitute motion now.
Yes.
Would you like to, who made...
Mr. McMillan?
Mr. McMillan, would you like to restate your substitute motion before we vote?
It was just to extend the superintendent's contract and benefits as they now exist for one year.
Okay.
Ms. Dethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Pass.
Ms. Fugit?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
No.
I'll change my pass to yes.
Okay. What about you, who else, just your pass? Okay, so the motion to extend the super... Do you want to read it, Ms. Copey?
The motion to extend the superintendent's contract for one year passes with a vote of seven to two.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have board, board forum.
Yes.
So, Mr. McMillan, do you have anything for board forum?
No, not now.
Ms. Hill?
Would this be an appropriate time to talk about this handout that we were given?
No.
No, that has to be in the regular session.
Even though we're not voting on this in the regular session? I'm just asking for an appropriate...
Mr. Dufler, do you want to rule on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Hill. It's board forum, so each board member could choose to talk about, you know, whatever subject that board member wants to talk about briefly.
Thank you. All right, then, I am choosing too. This handout that we were given in response to my request Monday night about extending step increases or the possibility of looking at a longevity bonus for our teachers that reached the 21st year. Just for clarification, I think you all know that it stops at step 20, and that was concerning to several of us. I would like to encourage you, Mr. Thomas, to incorporate these options in our next budget cycle. And if this is something that has to go through collaborative conferencing, then please bring that to their attention also. I'm very passionate about continuing to reward our educators that stay with us in Knox County schools.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since this is my last superintendent evaluation ever, I just want to say that I wish you great luck and much success, Mr. Thomas. I think you will do an excellent job for Knox County schools. I have enjoyed working with you this year, and you and I have had very frank conversations, so nothing I said to you today was a surprise, because I always promise not to surprise the superintendent. But I really do think great things are ahead for Knox County schools, and I look forward to what happens in the next couple of years.
Mr. Norman?
Good.
Ms. Owen? Ms. Dethridge? Ms. Katz? Okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn the called meeting, and we will recess and come back in at 5:30. Question meeting for June 13th, 2018. The moment of silence and pledge of allegiance were led earlier by Mr. Norman at our called meeting, so we'll move on from there. We had recognized Chairman Randy Smith, Commissioner David Wright, and City Council Stephanie Welch, and Commissioner Evelyn Gill. Are there any other elected officials that have come in since then? Okay. Just a reminder, before we vote for changes to the agenda, that item 99I was withdrawn since Herndon Valley Elementary School decided not to apply for this grant. Are there any other changes to this agenda? Okay, may I have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, Becky Ash, is she in the audience? Yeah, come on up, Ms. Ash. And introduce your special guest and our guest.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here to introduce to you a team that plays a sport that not many schools in Knox County have flourished, as we have. Being a non-traditional school, it is only fitting that we should have non-traditional sports, and in those sports, our students are excelling. And before I call them up, I know that magnet schools are on everybody's mind right now. When you guys are discussing them later, I hope you'll think of their faces when they're up here, because they come from every middle school that's zoned within our county and some extra, and they're part of the student body. They've excelled not only on the athletic fields, but they're part of the student body that this year moved us up to be ranked number six in high schools in the state of Tennessee by U.S. News &amp; World Report. We're the highest-ranked Knox County High School on the list. We're the number 118th magnet school, best magnet school in the nation. And it's because they bring the same discipline that they apply on the frisbee field to their studies, and I'm just so proud of them. Just to give you a little background, their sport is ultimate frisbee. And if you've never watched it, it is, it's faster-paced than anything you watch. It makes me think of soccer with a frisbee instead of with your feet and a ball, but it's more intricate than that. It's exceedingly athletic. Their endurance is unbelievable. And this team has been together now, this is our fourth year to field a team, I believe, under, the fifth year, under the umbrella of Knox Youth Ultimate. And the majority of the students are from STEM. There are a few that join us from some other places. But just to give you an idea of their record, Knoxville City League has championships twice a year, and we've won it the last eight times. So four years in a row, both spring and fall, we're the city champs. They are the Tennessee State Champs, two years in a row, but they won it a year before that, too, and then there was an intervening year. They are the Kentucky State Champs, two years in a row. This summer, they got invited to a national tournament that brings the best teams, the 16 best teams from across the nation get invited to play in this tournament. It was in Chicago this summer. They went in seeded at number 14, no, they were ranked number 14 in the nation. They went in seeded at number 11, and then they played so well out of their bracket, they were playing in the Elite Eight, and they finished the tournament at number seven in the country. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you the L.N. STEM Academy Ultimate Frisbee.
If y'all will come forward, we'd like to get a picture with you.
I have to say one other word while they're assembling for the photo. Beyond just their expertise in the game on the field, they are young people of character. Three years ago, we lost a senior player due to a motorcycle accident in the spring of his senior year, and he was one of the anchors for the team. And this team still, when they go out to play against other teams, they share the jersey of that fallen player with the other team, and they start the game with a chant. The student's name was Michael, and they start it with the chant, "Live Like Michael", to remind them to seize every day. So they are young people of character, as well as skill, and we just couldn't be more proud of them. Thank you. You love each other. You just spent four days in Chicago together.
We have one other special recognition tonight, and that is our 2017-18 Board of Education Student Representative, Kenley Coontz. The board and superintendent Thomas wanted to take this opportunity to recognize a very deserving student this evening. Kenley Coontz was selected through a very rigorous application and interview process during the spring of 2017 as our Board of Education Student Representative for the school year. Throughout high school, Kenley held leadership positions in various school clubs. She was president of Key Club, treasurer of Science Olympiad, chair of service for student council, National Arts Honor Society, and Casa de Sora Team Board, and historian of the National Spanish Honor Society. In addition to her club involvement, Kenley earned a varsity letter in soccer and was co-captain for her competitive travel team. In addition to her school involvement, she also was involved heavily in the community. She is the founder and president of the Garden Project, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to provide at-risk youth the resources they need to express themselves artistically. This organization has served Pond Gap Elementary and Saramore Green Elementary and is partnered with Casa de Sora, an international nonprofit dedicated to providing educational opportunities to Latin communities. She will continue to grow this organization as she attends college with plans to expand across the state. Kenley has also served as a coordinator of Serve Knox Ideas Festival, a mentor with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and a volunteer with the Grove Church, CARM, and the Community Law Office. She has received many awards for her academic achievement and community involvement, including AP Scholar with Distinction, Governor's School for Humanities attendee, President's Educational Excellence Award, and Best of West in IB English, IB Psychology, peer tutoring, honors Spanish II, honors Chemistry, and honors Geometry. She has also been recognized as an East Tennessee Volunteer of the Year nominee, and has been awarded the Optimist Club Service to Humanity Award, Junior Citizenship Award, TALK Key Club Volunteer Award, and Eagle Award, the highest honor for a West graduate. I'm almost through. Kenley graduated West High School in May with a state distinction and as an international baccalaureate diploma candidate. She will be attending the University of Tennessee as West High's first-ever Haslam Scholar, a program providing unique educational opportunities and a full-ride scholarship to only 15 incoming students each year. Kenley plans to major in biomedical engineering with a minor in entrepreneurship. Please join me as we congratulate Kenley on her many accomplishments and thank her for her service as a Board of Education Student Representative. So joining on her onstage will be Ms. Fugit, the representative for West High School, Superintendent Thomas, myself, and Ms. Roundtree, who was fortunate enough to be Kenley's teacher. Okay, ready now, I think, Ms. Coetney?
Item seven, Consent Agenda.
Do I have your motion to? Okay, we'll give that to Ms. Fugit and seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, A, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. B, 180, public forum as amended.
Do I have? Do I hear a motion?
We have public forum on this item, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is public forum on that, so.
Yes, ma'am. Our first public forum speaker for this item is Vivian Shaipe.
Good afternoon. Vivian Underwood Shaipe, 2347, Easemagnolia, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37917. Before I begin, there are two very important items that need to be addressed. First, we want to give a public thank you to Gloria Dethridge for the years of service that she has given. I salute you, ma'am. The second thing I want to do is I want to acknowledge Patty Bound for many, many letters and emails I sent out. Only one person took the time to sit down and handwrite me a letter, and also make a phone call to reach out across the aisle to get to understand and to try to build a relationship, because we think and we do very different ways of getting things done. But we are and have been conversing, and I am thanking her for reaching out and trying to understand what is being going on and understanding the other side of the table. That's what we need nationwide, that's what we need locally, so I thank you. Now, come before you, in that same vein about building relationships, to tell you that the great changes you have seen these last few months are reflective of the tsunami of change that is going on in America. You see, we want our leaderships to be accountable, approachable, and attentive. There has been a great awakening in this land, and you are the first Board of many to come after you to experience this awakening. All over this world, people want to come to live in this country because of the freedoms, one of which is the freedom of speech. When you hear us come before you, one by one, saying the same thing over and over from all over this city, what you are hearing is that we are on that issue on one accord, that we want you to hear us. We want you to hear us, we don't want you to fear us. I saw the extra officers in the audience here on Monday and in preceding meetings. When you see us come in mass, like the over 1,000 who came before you in these past few months, it was not anger, it was passion. Passion for our children, and it came from all over this city. You see, we are awake, we care, and we speak. And when we speak, as these young kids say, don't get all caught up in your feelings, okay? Leave those at the door, for you were chosen by us, and you were elected to represent us. And we are not going to just go away. Yes, you are correct, these are your board meetings, you're correct, but you are our board. Don't dismiss the workshops that inform you just because they don't interest you. You see, those are your opportunities to get together and learn what needs to be done all over this city. And you can best serve us by attending those meetings. You see, we're listening. We're watching here, we're watching on CTV, on the internet, we're live streaming you, and as Haley said, we're recording you. We are America, we are Knoxville, we are the public, we are awake, and we are going to stay woke. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker for this agenda item is Lauren Hopson.
You did say me, right? Okay. Lauren Hopson, Knox County. Five years ago, I started speaking regularly at public forum. At that time, we had a superintendent and a school board that would have much preferred to have teachers and parents, for that matter, email concerns or work them up the chain of command. Why? Pretty simple, because they didn't want them to see the light of day. And that is why so many of us chose to keep using public forum as a means to express our concerns. Although I have a much greater level of trust with the current board and the superintendent, I still will not support moving away from public forum as a primary way of communicating because school boards and administration are ever-changing. I also want to make the point that even though I consider some of you friends, I prefer to use public forum rather than email you or talk to you on the phone, because unfortunately, the public is rarely in this room. I am often disappointed that there is usually a good crowd at 5:00, but once students or schools are recognized for accomplishments, most of the public leaves and misses out on the discussion of important issues affecting our school system. The public is out there, watching from home, and deserves to hear the issues discussed in depth, and limiting that either by individual time or cumulative time takes that right of our public away. It took hundreds of speakers at five minutes each, two years plus, to make some meaningful change in the oppressive culture of our school system. At two to three minutes each, it would have taken us twice as long, and many of you may not be sitting up there, because the public would not have become as informed about the need for change. You have been a part of some long, tense meetings as of late, but facing the music when people are unhappy or concerned is part of your job. I don't always agree with the opinions of speakers or the way in which they express their ideas, but I will vigorously defend their right to say their piece and not be rushed, as they are in some other school systems, most notably Nashville Metro. If you don't know how things are going on there, you probably should look it up. It's not good. In the last several months, I've been witness to administrators actually feeling comfortable enough to come and speak before you about concerns that never would have happened four years ago. I would hate to see them regress in their level of comfort as well. Several years back, the board was considering limiting public forum at about the time we were holding a march from Market Square to here in order to protest a proposed new charter school. A friend of mine quite worriedly asked, "What will they do, what will we do if they don't let us speak?" I thought about it for a second, and I replied, "I almost hope they don't, because then we'll go outside to the courtyard where there are no time limits, and the cameras will follow." I know long meetings are tedious and inconvenient. I know sometimes issues are misconstrued, and it can be hurtful. I know the tone is not always pleasant. I have been at or watched most of them since 2013. And don't forget that even I had a police officer tell me to sit down once. Please don't alienate teachers working numerous hours over their contract time for free and not talk about giving them a raise, and then have issue with having three long meetings a month. That can't be too much to ask. Thank you.
That concludes public forum on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Well, no seconds needed, so, Mr. Norman?
Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
It would die.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, the motion is based on the discussion that we had in our policy meeting, and in the last policy meeting, and given all the events that took place subsequent to that, some 14 hours of public forum, in which, you know, I personally think the public forum was just abused. That's my opinion, and certainly I feel like this board was abused. And because of that, there is just a, there's just a breakdown in terms of communication. A seven-and-a-half-hour straight public forum does not serve the community.
Point forward, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'm about to make the motion.
Okay, you'll need to go ahead and make it before we do any further discussion.
Okay, the motion is then to limit the meeting to one hour and each speaker to three minutes.
Okay. The motion is the same as what is on the agenda, eight, A, for three minutes and one hour. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McMillan. Now, Mr. Norman, if you would like to continue your discussion.
And so, because the nature of these meetings and the way the meetings took place, for example, the issue of Project Grad and Magnet School issues, it was obvious from the speakers, there was much information, misinformation, there was a misunderstanding about, or a total ignorance of the facts that this system spent a lot of time and money looking, evaluating these programs, and they found those programs sorely lacking. Now, that was not discussed. There were excuses made and supposed holes shot in the research. The research was thorough. There were some 65 metrics in the Magnet program, of which 65, 67% of them were either negative or insignificant. You just can't deny what the research said, but it seemed that the people who spoke either did not read it or did not understand it, or they were informed wrongly about it. And it seemed like a lot of people were here based on that misinformation. So based on that, I considered the meeting almost, well, just of marginal value. To me, if we have an issue, we have a big topic like this, if we have 20 speakers, after four or five speakers on this topic, it's covered. The rest of it's venting. And you can have 1,000 people here, not all of them have to speak. Pick the people to speak that you want to speak. We'll hear them. We have all kinds of methods of communication. We listen, we answer phone calls, we respond to emails. There's no abridgement of communication. I think the meeting has, and this issue of public forum has been abused, and this is a reaction to the abuse. There's a lot of bodies in our political bodies. The Congress doesn't have public forum, the legislature doesn't have public forum. These are, this is a, this is a privilege, and it's been abused, and this is a reaction to it, and that's the reason why I'm making this motion. Thank you.
Okay, next would be Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't support this motion, and I will not support it, and I would just say that I've spent many a night, Ms. Hopson and I have spent many a night here having lots of public forum. We've done it with various issues, they come up all the time, and it, and no, it's not pleasant, and oftentimes what people say in the audience on any topic may not be factually correct as we understand it, but I really believe that we do ourselves as a board more disservice by acting like we don't want to have public forum than to just let public forum happen. I understand, I mean, I could be in favor of three minutes as opposed to five, various people shorten the time, but I cannot support putting a time limit on public forum.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to speak to the other changes, which is what I mentioned on Monday night as well, so I'm not supportive of the changes, the other changes in the policy, but I do think those changes on line 27 and, let's see, line 33 and line 40, I believe, would be useful changes to make to the policy. So, can I make a substitute motion that we accept the revisions only on those lines, and that means we're leaving the time limits in place as they currently are?
Okay, we have a substitute motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit, and a discussion on the substitute motion. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Owen?
My discussion was on the original motion.
Okay.
And I'll just, I'm...
Do we want, so, any other discussion on the substitute motion? If not, then we'll vote on it. Mr. McMillan?
Can you explain what the motion, what does that mean?
Yeah, that's what I was, thank you, Chairwoman and Mr. Norman. So that means, for those of you that are in the audience and watching at home and everywhere, so, the lines that I specifically mentioned would state, "Public forum speaker shall address remarks to the entire board and not individual members," and then subsequently...
That, that's, that exists, right? That's current.
No, sir.
It's supposed to have been current.
It's, the way it's currently written, it states, "Public forum speaker shall address remarks to Chair or Vice Chair and may direct questions to individual board members or staff only upon approval of Chair or Vice Chair." And then the other line changes was the addition in line 32 that states, "The Chair or Vice Chair shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive, degrading, and/or insulting to any and all board members and Knox County school employees, or who does not adhere to public forum rules." And so that just replaces the language that previously stated, or chooses to be abusive to individual board members or the board as a whole, or any Knox County employee. And then the final line item change at the end states, "Individual seeking additional information about public forum or any item on a meeting agenda shall direct inquiries to the office of the Board of Education or the Director of Schools," so that just gives them an additional contact point.
Okay, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I had a question for Ms. Roundtree. Would you accept, as an amendment, to go along with your substitute motion, would you accept the three-minute rule excluding the maximum amount of time?
I'd like to hear from the rest of our colleagues before I consider that.
Okay. I'm not sure how to proceed here, Mr. DePur. We have a substitute motion made. Mr. McMillan wants to know if Ms. Roundtree would be amicable to three minutes, so...
She, she might, excuse me, she made the, the motion, so if I want to amend it, she has to accept the, that.
Right, but she won't hear from other board members.
Or she can reject it either way.
Madam Chair, have him look at page, line 30, it does have three minutes in line 30.
But I said not to accept that.
I know, but he was asking that question about three minutes.
He wants me to amend the, what I had stated, and that wasn't in my substitute. Okay. Okay, we can...
Okay, so, we can continue discussion, and other board members can let us know how they feel about that if they want to. So, is there any other discussion on the substitute motion, or substitute amendment?
Is there a second?
Yes, it was seconded by Ms. Fugit.
Are we looking at accepting lines 27 and 33 through 34?
Yeah, 27, 33 through, well, that would be the strikeout through 35, and then line 40, I guess that's, yes, that's 40.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Is that clear as mud to everyone?
No.
So, to clarify, it would be all the...
I believe Ms. Roundtree is proposing to accept all of the changes except the three-minute time limit and the one-hour time limit, but all of the other changes would remain.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Fugit has seconded that, and this is a substitute amendment. But, Mr. McMillan?
So, should you reject the three-minute rule?
Yes.
So, Ms. Roundtree has rejected that amendment, or whatever. Okay, so, if there's no other discussion, are we ready to vote? Okay, so, we are voting on the substitute amendment to, substitute motion, sorry, to, that was made by Ms. Roundtree and seconded by Ms. Fugit. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So, motion carries. Ms. Coetney?
Item 8B, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I 381, integration of TCAP scores and student grades as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Oh, Ms. Hill?
No.
I'm sorry, did you have?
Complete that.
Okay, all opposed. Okay, motion carries. Ms. Coetney?
Item 8C, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J 191, misbehaviors and disciplinary options as amended.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did you say option B?
Which, Mr. Norman, will you clarify?
Did I say option B?
There's an A and B.
I think he's clarifying.
Option B.
So, Mr., is that the one you want to second, Ms. Roundtree?
Yes, and I would like to ask for a friendly amendment.
And then, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask for a friendly amendment of that, Mr. Norman, if possible, to waive the second reading of the revision to Policy J 191, which is normally required by Board Policy V 200. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have an amendment on the floor to suspend the reading of that. We have a motion, and a sec?
I was gonna speak to that.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned on, at our meeting on Monday, I think it's in the best interest of the board to go ahead and waive our second reading of this, and as Ms. Massey stated, there are schools and administrators who are waiting to send their handbooks and information to press, so that's why I've made the friendly amendment to ask that the board waive the second reading of this policy, and I just want to thank all the folks that have been involved in this and put in a lot of hours and time, Ms. Massey and her team, and all the community folks, so, thank you.
Okay, so, we will vote on the amendment to suspend the second reading of this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. We'll go back to the motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, for the Policy J 191. Is there discussion on that?
Option B.
Option B version, yes. Option B. No discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item 9A, approve receipt of funds for a voluntary pre-K grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Education for 2018-2019 in the amount of $2,027,574, with required in-kind and matching funds of $1,145,323.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
9B, approve memorandum of understanding with the Knox County Health Department for provision of the in-school health program, up to $479,016 for the term of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
9C, approve receipt of funds for a Tennessee Department of Education IDEA discretionary supplemental grant in the amount of $49,523.14 for the 2018-2019 school year designated for progress monitoring and related staff development.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
9D, approve receipt of grant funds from Simon Youth Foundation in the amount of $100,000 designated for the relocation of the Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Dethridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9E, approve memorandum of understanding and receipt of funds from Great Schools Partnership for a tutoring curriculum development grant in the amount of $26,000 for development of an integrated tutoring model for elementary schools.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
9F, approve receipt of funds from a TSP E Gears Grant for Farragut High School in the amount of $1,000 for the robotics team at Farragut High School.
Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
9G, approve receipt of funds from a URS CH2M Oak Ridge LLC UCOR Mini Grant in the amount of $1,000 for the STEM program at Farragut High School.
Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
9I, approve receipt of funds from a supplemental I Zone Year 3 Grant from the Tennessee Department of Education in the amount of $100,980 to support current priority schools.
I'm sorry. This motion made by Ms. Fugit, who's seconded by Ms. Dethridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item 9I was withdrawn. 10A, approve amendment to contract with TRA School Software Solutions to include a services agreement with Online School Management Systems Incorporated for provision of online school payment services to strengthen compliance regulations within the contract.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
10B, approve contracts with Chris Haggard Plumbing LLC, Del Air Mechanical, and Mac Mahan Mechanical Incorporated to provide plumbing services as needed for the term of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 11A, approve memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership regarding community schools for fiscal year 2019 with an option to renew for additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years, at no cost to Knox County schools.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Dethridge. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
11B, approve differentiated pay plan for the Knox County schools for school year 2018-2019.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Horn. Discussion on this. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
11C, approve fund balance appropriation in the amount of $4,275,881 for science textbook, textbook purchase.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Ms. Roundtree, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I think everyone at their seat got the information from Sarah Searls about the textbook wish list, so I just wanted to, I know Sarah's in the audience back there. Thanks, Sarah, for putting this together so quickly. I think the only, the only additional thing that I would love to see that may be beneficial for the board is to see the age of the current textbooks and when the, maybe when the last adoption was, just to have a, I know that you sort of broke them down in order, but I think also for the board and the public even to, to know that we have, we have books that are, like I said, not quite my age yet, but they may be, they'll probably get there by the time Teddy starts kindergarten, so I think that would just be beneficial. So, I appreciate this, Sarah, and thanks for all your work. And thanks to Andrea, she's over there somewhere, for all the, her work with the science standards and the textbooks.
Okay, so, we have a motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
11D, approve appropriation of $1,075,000 of the fiscal year 2019 budget on five-year debt financing with Knox County government.
Motion made by Ms. Hill. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
11E, approve district data center construction and associated fund balance designation at an estimated cost of $850,000.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
11F, approve Knox County schools 2019 through 2020 school year calendar.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
11G, approve Knox County Board of Education 2018-2019 calendar.
Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Owens. Any discussion on this? Ms. Hill?
My appreciation in adding the quarterly workshop dates.
Okay, so, with that, could you specify, I, Ms., yes, Ms. Horn, no, Ms. Roundtree. Ms. Roundtree, are you motioning with the quarterly dates in there?
I didn't, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, Ms. Horn, okay, sorry. Ms. Horn?
I just had it out, looking at it.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to accept the revised calendar that includes the quarterly, are we calling them mid-month? Quarterly workshop.
Okay, okay, so, we have a substitute motion made by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Owens. Is there any discussion on the substitute that includes the quarterly meetings? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
11H, appointment of committee to review and create a new superintendent's evaluation tool.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Discussion? Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Chair. Chairman, I assume this is just giving you the authority to appoint, and you will appoint at a later date who the committee members are, correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is what we had before us.
Just one quick question, Madam Chair. Is there gonna be a timeframe on this? Because if not, I don't know if we're gonna appoint it now or just wait until you get past, until new members, I don't know how. Do you have a timeframe on this at all?
Yes, my intention is to appoint as, should you all approve, to appoint the committee as early as tomorrow so that they can get together and start work on it, so it would be ready to go. Any other discussion? Okay? Motion was made, let's see, where were we here? Motion, Ms. Coetney, was it made by Ms. Roundtree and seconded by Mr. Norman? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
11I, approve appropriation for additional revenue in the amount of $538,000 from the estimated increase in BEP revenue for the purpose of restoring two teaching positions at Green Elementary School, one teaching position at Sarah Moore Green Elementary School, increasing Magnet School allocations, and restoring three gifted and talented positions, plus the cost of adding the gifted licensure endorsements.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Horn. Discussion? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to make a point that going forward, we have the Joint Education Committee with the County Commission, but we haven't been utilizing that time, and so, just to help alleviate some of the problems that we've had during this budget cycle, I think we really need to make sure that we get those dates on the calendar and be sure that we're meeting as a committee so that we can all be better informed as to what is coming down the pike regarding the budget. And so, if, if, if we can just try to do that over this next year, I think that will help when we come around to the next budget cycle.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, I know Monday, I think Superintendent said that in this proposal he was gonna re, increase Magnet back to the budget they had, or was I misunderstanding? Because it's at 40. And so, I was, I was, someone was asking me that after the meeting, so I just thought I'd just pass it on to you, Superintendent, and see...
Okay, Superintendent Thomas, do you want to clarify?
Yes.
The amount of the funding?
Yeah, the, the allocation that was currently approved was $20,000 per school, so the addition of $80,000 to what was in the budget, $160,000, I believe, will take it to $30,000 for each of the eight schools.
But we have nine.
That's why I... Yeah, I think...
That's, yeah, that's the reason.
Eight, eight, eight received the allocation, I believe, last year, that's...
So, we have the, the, the schools that are total, I mean, are whole schools different than those that are programs? I mean, I thought we had nine.
I don't, Mr. Schneider, do you have the, the list of, of the schools with you? I don't have the list right now, I just...
I think that's because...
Ms. Coetney said she thinks it's attached.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. I believe the ninth school was West High School historically, but it's... They've not received the allocation, I believe. They don't receive the allocation.
Oh, okay.
So, it was just eight that received the allocation.
Okay, that was my confusion as well.
Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, if I'm correct, the motion was made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Horn. Oh, Ms. Hill, sorry, I missed your line.
Superintendent, I would like to be clear that we still are going to be having the... the, um, uh, extra attention given to results.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Ms. Dethridge?
Okay, I'm, I'm confused. What do you mean by results? I mean, how you spend the money? Because results in a dance program is not necessarily a data point. So I guess my question is, what exactly you mean by results?
Ms. Hill?
The, the concern of all of this initially was the literacy.
Yeah, but magnet programs not literacy.
Well, as of Monday night, but it is. All of our schools are literacy.
Right.
All of our schools.
Correct.
So all of our schools need to be held accountable for that.
I agree.
And especially our schools that already receive hundreds of thousands of dollars more.
That has nothing to do with this program right here. I'm talking about magnet programs. And I'm trying to ask the superintendent, how does he expect, or how did he plan to hold them accountable? And when you don't have data points, the program, the, I guess, I guess I could see how the program.
I would argue, we do have data points.
No, 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 I'm not, no, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying, when you talk about those that participate, how many participate, how they're doing in classroom activities or whatever, but I mean, when you say that, I just need a little bit more clarification as to what that means and what that entails.
Superintendent Thomas, do you want to address that?
Yes, ma'am. And we're, we're still continuing to look at that as a staff in terms of what the, what the, we've talked about the metrics, and, um, yes, and the expectations and so forth, but as, as a school, but it's all schools that, um, that we're going to be looking at. So not necessarily the, the, the program there, but looking at the school in total, and what, in terms of the achievement and so forth. And, and again, we're looking, with the reading initiative that we're putting in place, some measurements there so that we can see if we're making progress with, uh, with reading and literacy.
Okay.
That's what I'm, yeah, I agree with that. But when you say how you're going to address magnet programs are, that's where I was kind of confused.
Okay, Ms. Owen?
Is there a timeline for when we might see the metrics under which magnet programs will be measured, as those are separate?
We, um, by the time and over the summers, we're, we're still working, but there are also people that are, that take their vacations and so forth. So I think by the time school begins, uh, before school begins, month of August, we should have, just have things in place.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would respectfully request that by our August board meeting, that we know the metrics by which magnet programs are going to be evaluated. I, I don't think it's fair to the schools to go into the school year without understanding how the $30,000 they get for magnet may or may not be impacted by, by the metrics, which is, is indeed separate. Those funds are not for a literacy program. I don't dispute that they need to be evaluated. The schools need to be evaluated. But if magnet is about dance, or magnet is about the arts, or whatever, then how, what metrics are you going to use to, I'm not going to argue the point. I would just like for everybody to know by August, when school starts, what those metrics would be. So I just request that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure, Mr. Norman or Ms. Hill. Who had their light on?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, Ms. Hill, oh, Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to remind the board that our research department designed two studies. The studies were comprehensive. They cover every significant aspect that's appropriate to each one of those programs. And, um, I, I don't see how they would, why we would differ in how we evaluate the programs. I think those were absolutely well done. And it's a, it was just a absolutely good study. So I hope they go ahead and do it the same way. Uh, so the metrics are available, but I, but I agree, if there's something else that, uh, we're going to evaluate them on, they need to know ahead of time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hill?
Uh, and, and I certainly support that. And to your point, Ms. Fugit, part of the restoration of funds, uh, does have to do with teaching positions so that the magnet programming can continue. And our, our goal for all of our schools is, all of our elementary schools, it just, and I'm not, I am not wanting to open an old wound, but we have got to get our kids reading, period. And that, that remains my personal priority over other additional programs that might be within a school. That if, if resources for other programs within a school, um, are, are working and the kids are learning to read, have at it. But if they are not, then there may need to be a redirection of the way the money is spent within that school toward their programming, so that we've got these kids reading. That was, that was the whole point of my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Owen?
I know that everyone on this board has said to me in the past that it does not make sense to evaluate my music class that I taught based on how students did in science, or in math, or in reading. It also makes no sense to evaluate supplemental programs for things that those programs are not designed to address. So the folks who are leading these programs should absolutely know what metrics they will be judged on prior to being judged on those metrics. If they are teaching dance, the metrics should match that course. If they are teaching vocal music, the metrics should match that course. If they are teaching art, the metrics should match that course. And so regardless of the depth of a study or the depth of an evaluation, if it is in an area that does not match the goals of the program, it is invalid. And our folks who are teaching in those programs should have the opportunity to know in advance, not after, but in advance, what those metrics will be.
Thank you. Fugit, you had your light on, you.
She said it as well as it could be said.
Okay, thank you. Then we have, I see no other lights. The motion was made by Ms. Owen. It was seconded by Ms. Horn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker for a public forum is John Hondulus.
Thank you for the opportunity. This board might want to show a little bit of, a little bit of discretion when you keep those of us who are advanced age waiting. But thank you for the opportunity. My name is Hondulus. I'm a registered engineer. I come before this assembly to bring into question a process that's called evolution, taught as a science. Well, what is evolution? It's a theory by Charles Darwin that all life forms on Earth were created by nature. No creator was involved. Now, by definition, whatever creates is a god. Therefore, Charles Darwin's god was evolution by nature. How did this, uh, process of evolution become embedded in our curriculum in school? In the early 1960s, uh, the Department of Education in Washington DC was advised that there was no evidence of a creator. They would be required to teach evolution in our schools. They're still doing it today. Now, scientists across America were curious, was it really true there was no evidence of a creator? Well, there was a scientist researching at Oak Ridge National Laboratory for 13 years, and he found evidence of a creator. What he found was a radioactive element called polonium 218 embedded in granites. It had a half-life of three minutes and decayed from uranium-238. Now, if the sample being tested indicated the presence of uranium-238, you'd find polonium. If the sample being tested showed no evidence of uranium, you will not find polonium. Uh, yet he found polonium-218 embedded in granites with no evidence whatever that uranium-238 was ever present. So his conclusion, and I think it's the right one, there was a creative force, we reach, we consider to be our living god, who created polonium-228 embedded in a matrix. Uh, and that matrix was converted to granites by him. And, uh, his findings were published in national science journals, and they remain uncontroverted to this very day. Uh, now, subsequent to that, he and his associates produced a documentary called The Young Age of the Earth, incorporating therein the findings that I previously discussed, plus a great deal more. Uh, he wanted to distribute these documentaries to the public at large, and particularly to the school districts across America, including, of course, Knox County, Tennessee. Uh, and more to the point, they wanted to, uh, challenge the thinking by so many people who don't seem to know that evolution is a science, it is no science whatever. Now, is there a spiritual consequence in adopting Charles Darwin's god of education by nature as a science in our public schools? Well, our living god says that he created heaven and earth. That's what he said in Genesis. Uh, Charles Darwin's god of evolution is saying, that's not so. Nature created everything. Now, he is implying, when he says that, that our living god is a deceiver. This Knox County Board of Education, by its majority members present, uh, and having adopted Charles Darwin's theory of evolution as a science in our classroom, by necessity, although they are ignorant, what, they didn't understand what they were doing, uh, were confirming the characterization of our living god, that he is a deceiver. Now, uh, for five days a week during the school year, the Knox County Board of Education, this one, uh, by its majority members, uh, pay homage to Charles Darwin's god. And on Sunday, they go to church and pay homage to the living god, all in violation of the First of the Ten Commandments that says, "You will not have other gods before me." Now, um, I may owe apology to some members of this board for whatever I may have said, or did say 50 years ago. And if I did, if you're offended, I apologize and ask you to forgive me. I am prepared to deliver these documentaries to our high school and middle school at no cost to the county. Uh, the teachers are free to review or accept, or not to do so. The curriculum is not affected.
Mr. Hondulus.
At all, uh, by, by this distribution.
Thank you. Your, your time is finished, sir.
I'm asking this board to, uh, direct by motion or otherwise, the superintendent of this, of this school, that he assist me in this effort. And I thank you very much for, uh, the opportunity. And good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Bob Chronic.
Good evening, Bob Chronic, 3636 Tallaluna Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee. Count your blessings, I teach three-hour classes. I have about 10 items that I'll try to cover as quickly as possible, and they are specific in terms of some things that I think, from my perspective, could make things better for Knox County Schools. I think the first thing that Knox County Schools got to come to grips with is that the problems of schools cannot be solved by schools alone. So number two, I'd like to open the door to systems thinking, which I see badly missing in every facet of our human service work, mainly because it's so complicated, it's difficult. But if you can think of a system as a mobile above a crib, when you flick it, you only hit one part, but the whole mobile moves. And that's what we've got, I think, in our schools, our prisons, our psychiatric facilities, everything that we have to deal with. The sad part about it is that all of this comes to roost at the school. The school is the theater where the drama of America plays out. So that's one of the reasons that I got interested in schools. So I want to lay out three points that I hope that we can remember, systems thinking being the most. I remember reading an article in the paper one time about why third grade kids can't read. And all it did was blame the victim. These kids aren't motivated, they're lazy, the teachers are bad. And I kept thinking, the kids that I work with, their dad just lost their job. That plays a big role in the kids not being able to read. So again, we've got to think out of the box more broadly. We've got to get more players in here to, to do this. And I will talk about some things that I've, that I put together. The second thing that I hope for with Knox County Schools is collaboration. Collaboration is an unnatural act between non-consenting adults. We don't do it, and we don't do it well. We coordinate, we cooperate, but we do not collaborate. Collaborate involves giving up something, turfism, trust, whatever it is. And then lastly, is prevention. What do I want from our schools when it comes to prevention? Prevent them, first of all, from dropping out. Dropouts cost us a lot of money. Dropouts end up in state custody. In the state of Tennessee, kids who come into state custody, they don't come out. So if you're in Morgan County and you're in a juvenile facility, you're going to walk right across the street to the Morgan County prison at 50, 55 grand a year. That's a mistake. So I hear when we're talking about money and how to deploy it, I'd rather that we think about the programs first. If we're teaching reading and it's not working, then let's do it differently. While y'all were discussing the, the value of public forum, why don't you do it systemically, put public forum first? Um, opportunity gaps. When I first started the, the first community school in this town 20 years ago, one of the things I was concerned about was achievement gaps between kids of color and white kids. And we have worked very hard on that, but we've not done much of a job. We used to call it the educational gap. It's not an educational gap, it's an opportunity gap. And we have to do better with opportunities. Now, one of the things that I find fascinating is looking at Supreme Court cases. Almost everybody knows about the Brown decision. Very few people know about the San Antonio case. The San Antonio case was interesting because the court in San Antonio, Texas, ruled that suburban schools had to help fund inner-city schools that had less funds. The Supreme Court, with Louis Powell, who served on the school board of Arlington, Virginia, reversed that case, and that has never been appealed. In other words, there is no law that says we have to move monies around. And it's all about the money, I can tell you that. Uh, one of the things that I've become very interested in is how our laws deal with status offenders. When we flick kids out of school, we, we can't put a status offender child who's truant in a facility with a kid who robs a bank. That's the law, that law in 1977 by Birch By out of the state of Iowa. So what have we done? We've come up with paper that says, okay, you don't go to school, or you're unruly, we can put you on probation in Judge Owen's court. You don't go to school, you just violated your probation, we can lock you up for that. And then you wonder why we've got some of the problems with kids coming to school. I'm only going to get to one more. Um, let me just say this. October the 8th, we're going to be running a community engagement conference. I'll get it out to you all. Some of y'all remember my student Gavin Luter. We're going to bring him back, and we're going to go back to some of the things where we brought human service agencies together to help schools, and I hope y'all work with me. Obviously, he didn't come back. Melissa Massey's been a real good collaborator with us.
Are you here? Yeah.
See, you knew I was going to say something good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Chronic. Our next speaker is Grant Helmrick, Helmrick. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing that.
You got it the second time. That's better than most. Hold this up a little bit. Uh, my name's Grant Helmrick. I live on Sonia Drive in Farragut. Uh, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I, for one, am glad to have five minutes. I'll try not to run over. Uh, as you are all aware from my contact with you so far, the Farragut Lacrosse Club- As you are all aware from my contact with you so far, the Farragut Lacrosse Club has a plan in the works to install lights and spectator seating in one of the fields behind the Farragut Middle School. The club has an understandable need for a lighted field for both practice and games. The program is rapidly expanding, including boys' and girls' teams at the high school, middle school, and soon, elementary level. However, the field which the club is proposing to build on, while familiar and seemingly the most convenient option for them, is simply unsuitable for this purpose. Thankfully, as I will discuss in a moment, the field is only one of several options for the club, which the club and the school district need to consider. For background, the Farragut Middle School physically borders the property lines of residents in the quiet Farragut View residential neighborhood, including mine. The proposed light towers in question would stand less than 100 feet from adjoining homes, and would directly impact hundreds of residents who live on Sonya Drive and Admiral Road, as well as many more living nearby. In its current use as a daytime-only lacrosse practice field, instances of undue disturbance to the neighborhood have been minimal. However, under the proposed plans, the developed field and its newly expanded operating schedule would transform into a significant community nuisance based on recognized noise and light pollution standards. The plans as presented to a portion of the Farragut View residents less than a month ago included the installation of four 60-foot light towers outputting 644,000 lumens of light, as well as seating for 200 spectators. I should note that a rough calculation puts the luminance at the residential property line from these lights at several foot candles, a unit I was not familiar with until a couple weeks ago, which is several times higher than the zoning limit for the town of Farragut. These planned documents have also been labeled as Phase 1, strongly indicating the intent for further expansion, including a PA sound system. The stated intent from the lacrosse club is for the lighted field to be used from January to March for practices, five nights per week ending at 8:00, and for games in both the spring and fall seasons, generally ending by 9:00 PM but running as late as 10:00 PM. I have two children under three, so I'll let y'all guess my feelings on that. The club insists that they would strive to be good neighbors, which I sincerely believe to be true. But best intentions aside, the combination of shouting fans and bright lights placed in the middle of a residential neighborhood for more than 100 nights each year is far beyond what any reasonable resident in our school district would consider neighborly. And if we're honest with ourselves, these issues will only worsen with time. As our district grows, board members change, and promises and assurances are forgotten down the road. I recognize that the school board must carefully consider the needs of students interested in playing lacrosse, as well as the impact on neighbors. And with that in mind, I would respectfully suggest proceeding as follows. First, my understanding is that until just last year, the football field at Farragut High School was perfectly usable for lacrosse games, until the addition of an internal running track made the field too narrow to safely play lacrosse. Perhaps this track was installed without adequately consulting the lacrosse club and other stakeholders who use the field, but at any rate, the simplest, quickest, and most cost-effective solution would be a reversion of the football field. Properly using this excellent existing facility would be the wisest use of the club's and school district's funds, time, and effort, and it would get the lacrosse teams playing under an expanded schedule more quickly, all without disturbing your neighbors. Second, while this field may be the only empty space currently available at Farragut Middle or High School, there are many other undeveloped open fields in our area, including some right next to the school, which could be donated, leased, or purchased for use as an athletic facility. The lacrosse club includes students from multiple schools at each level, so there's no reason that a lacrosse facility needs to be on these particular school grounds. A different field nearby would be a far greater long-term benefit to the lacrosse club, because it would provide greater space, fewer usage restrictions, no controversy, and flexibility for future multi-phase plans. Finally, if it is later somehow determined that no other suitable field can be found, a panel should be created to study and implement methods to mitigate negative impact on the neighborhood from the field and to ensure compliance with all relevant zoning ordinances. Such a panel should include representatives from the school, the lacrosse club, and the neighborhood, to ensure that all parties have a voice in this process. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak this evening and for your consideration of this issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirsten Cisco.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you again. Kirsten Cisco, Knox County. Last month, I came to speak to you about elementary school, how it was overloaded and stressful. I brought three of my students with me, and they read the fourth-grade social studies curriculum to you, all 41 standards. I had hoped that it would demonstrate how developmentally inappropriate they are for nine-year-old children. But those revised social studies standards won't be taught until 2019, 2020. This coming year, we have the same standards that were introduced in 2014, and the fourth grade social studies curriculum has 68 standards. 68 standards that students and teachers will be held accountable for. The fifth grade curriculum for this coming year has 74 standards. I have made each of you a copy, and I hope that you will look at it and read it, because it costs me $15 to make all the copies. Anyway, 74 standards for half of a school year. That's 18 weeks. You don't teach the first week because you've got to get your procedures. You don't really, I mean, you do teach at the end of the year, but it's too late to be tested, so let's take about, I don't know, four weeks away from that. You're looking at a ridiculous timeframe to teach 74 standards. In fact, it is impossible for true learning. And it's ironic, because when they hand you the curriculum with all those standards, they also hand you this little, this little printout of a pyramid of knowledge retention. And at the bottom of the pyramid, it's like listening and watching, not much knowledge retention. And as you go up the pyramid, the very tippy top is doing something, acting it out, hands-on, you know, teaching it to someone else. Can you imagine trying to take 74 standards and acting it out? The War of the Roses with Harry T. Byrne, you know, everybody wearing red, yellow, making a speech, having mom read her letter? I mean, there's so many great ways to teach social studies, and this is not the way to do it. So, in 2014, the new social studies curriculum came out, and when I downloaded the K-5, I honestly thought I had downloaded the high school. I thought I'd done the wrong thing. I was completely freaked out. And I must not have been the only one freaked out in the state of Tennessee, because a mere two years later, it was set to be revised, rather than the six-year cycle that it usually is. So Governor Haslam appointed 10 people to be the people who revised that curriculum. And they're all experts in their field, and they worked really, really hard. And I hate to criticize the product, but only one out of the 10 has ever taught elementary school before. One. One of the 10 is the developer of the Tennessee History for Kids website, great website, but he's never taught. And all eight, well, one more is an elementary school principal, but he's never taught elementary school. So eight out of the 10 only have taught high school, and two of those teach college. I read all the committee meeting minutes, and just very occasionally, people brought up, well, is that developmentally appropriate? But there was really no, there didn't seem to be any reaction or revision considered along those lines. So I am here because I am concerned about the health and well-being of Tennessee's elementary schools, the students, the teachers, and the administrators. With so much put on, all of us, from all different areas, there is less and less opportunity to have that sense of accomplishment. I did it, I made it all the way through. You're always out of time, I didn't get there, oh my gosh, there's so much more to do. I don't want it to be like that. And I want us to keep this in mind as we think about, like, all the things we add to teachers' plates. We're just humans, we're bags of feelings. We seek pleasure, we avoid pain. We're, we're setting ourselves up to be not the fastest improving state, but the fastest burning-out state, and I'm very concerned about it. I just want us all to keep it in our minds as we make any decision as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cisco, before you leave there, would you come forward again?
I will.
The presentation that you made last month had great effect on me. I've talked to our chair about it. I'm in the process of, I'm working with a historian that reviewed those standards. They're absurd, okay? This, this level of whatever they're trying to be accountable to is just absurd. Okay, so that's a given. Unfortunately, it's also a given that the State Board of Education and the Board of Education in Tennessee do a lot of absurd things. But this is particularly troublesome, and I'm composing some, a letter to address it. It will be sent through Martin Daniels to the legislature and carried that way. So I'll inform you, I'd like to keep in touch with you, I'd like for you to call me, we'll be, but this hadn't been forgotten, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you so much. That's great.
Our next speaker is Karen Binger, and because Ms. Binger lives outside Knox County, we have to take a vote per board policy, so.
No, I know. It's for board policy that we have to vote regardless.
Okay.
Move to allow.
Ms. Second. Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, cool, thanks. Hold on one second while, right before you speak, Mr. Normal, would you please share that as it comes together with us?
I'll just pass it around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binger. You may begin.
My name is Karen Binger. I am a teacher at Bluegrass Elementary, a colleague of Miss Cisco's, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak, even though I don't live in the county. So I want to piggyback on absurdity. So I teach mainly math, but I also, I consider my students all my students, and I'm very concerned about their progress in all the subjects. And what I'm seeing, I feel like we are doing harm to our students with our, I guess, overemphasis on scheduling and time management. We have so much curriculum to get into them that we schedule every minute of every day. I've added up the minutes we're supposed to spend on each subject, and it's more minutes than we're actually in school. And you can pare it down a little bit, but there's no transition time in elementary school. The kids are pushed constantly. It's go, 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 get this out, get this out. I don't have time to talk to you, I don't have time to do that. We're on the schedule, and I'll, I'll teach something, and it sparks an interest in the kids, and they want to talk to me about it, but I'm listening to them sort of, but it's like I'm watching the clock, and I still have this curriculum to get into them. We are instructed to waste no time, no downtime for the kids. Every minute counts. Even, I've seen pockets near the restrooms with flashcards in them, so that teachers can drill the kids while they're standing in line to use the restroom. We, as adults, need downtime. We need time to digest. We don't give that to our kids at all. I've been a teacher, I'm starting my 38th year. I'm National Board Middle Childhood Generalist. I've taught here in Tennessee and in California, and I've seen the pendulum swing back and forth, back and forth, but this is a swing that I think is unprecedented. I, I feel that we don't take into consideration our kids' developmental levels. Once my husband let me cook cream of wheat, once, just once, and you're supposed to boil the water, and you're supposed to dump the cream of wheat into the boiling water, which is exactly what I did, and exploded all over the stove and burned. Actually, what you're supposed to do is pour in a little bit, stir it, wait a minute, pour in a little bit more, stir it, wait a minute. And I think this is what we're not doing with our kids. We're dumping instruction into them, we aren't stirring, we aren't waiting a little bit. They have no downtime. They don't have time to reflect, they don't have time to digest. I've seen student behavior issues increase, I've seen attention behaviors increase. Kids don't want to come to school, they don't like school. I have a Facebook page dedicated to my former students, and when they talk on the Facebook, they share things like the book that got read aloud to them, the camping trips we took, the art projects we did, the class discussions we had, the way we problem-solved. And our curriculum and our schedule doesn't allow for any of that. I, I would like to build in some time, every single day for the homeroom teacher, since we're departmentalized, that they could spend 20 minutes every day with their kids, and use that time for the kids. Read aloud to them, let them vent about something, problem-solve, have a community forum with them, do a holiday art project. You don't see that anymore. You don't see kids coming out with pumpkins at Halloween time and Valentines, Valentine time. They don't have, that's not in our curriculum, and we don't have time for it. Just 20 minutes a day, if we could pare down some of those social studies standards and maybe make a time allotment for the kids, then let them have some downtime, maybe even some free time, just to do what you want to do, just smell the flowers. So I appreciate your time, and thank you very much. And I got a minute left.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes Public Forum. Move adjourned.
Okay. No, no, no. Ms., move to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Horn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.